Welcome to the regular council meeting of September the eighth, or September the third, two thousand and nineteen. One notice, council will hold a public meeting, planning meeting, on Tuesday, September seventeenth, to discuss a proposal zoning amendment, application concerning six lots at the, in the Nettie Lake area. We'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
It's moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting held September third, two thousand and nineteen, as presented.
All in favor? unanimous, passed. Declaration of pecuniary interests, councillor White?
I'm declaring for item six VIIII and bylaws nineteen dash zero nine one, nineteen dash zero nine two, as it involves a property owned by my father.
Duly noted, thank you. Petitions and delegations, none declared. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
It's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The inaugural meeting of the Kirkland Lake Recreation Committee held May eighth, or May ninth, sorry, two thousand and nineteen, and the meeting held July ninth, two thousand and nineteen. The one hundredth anniversary committee executive meeting held August sixth, two thousand and nineteen. The meeting to open sealed tenders for the supply of two three-quarter ton trucks held August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and the regular meeting of council held August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous. Reports of municipal officers and communications, councillor Rick Owen.
Thank you, your worship. Last, I just want to say that Bob Panaman wanted to be here tonight, but since his stroke, he's unable to appear in public ceremonies. It causes him a great deal of stress. I first met with Bob a couple of weeks ago, and for those who don't know Bob, he's an internationally recognized artist. He's most famous for his Arctic landscape paintings. His paintings are in collections all around the world, and at the age of eighty-five, he's still avidly painting. You probably wouldn't be able to buy any of his paintings for less than three thousand dollars, and that's just for a standard painting. He is a listed artist with the Art Gallery of Canada, so he's well-known internationally and across Canada for his work. Bob's stepfather was a very active in the local baseball scene as well. He was a bit of a local character, and I will get into that as well. Prior to coming to Kirkland Lake, Johnny Stoyan was a semi-professional baseball player, and he played with the Regina Nationals from nineteen thirty-two to nineteen thirty-six, and that's during the Depression, and at that time, the team folded. The Regina Nationals were affiliated with the New York Yankees, and he did try out for the New York Yankees. While he didn't make it, his proudest moment was when he was able to steal home plate on catcher Billy Dickey. Now, I don't know my baseball history all that well, but apparently, in the day, Billy Dickey was the hardest catcher to steal a base from, and that's something that he, he didn't let people forget. When he moved to Kirkland Lake, he moved to play with Mines teams. At that time, Bright Hargraves had a team, Toburn had a team, and there was one other mine, I can't think of it right now. When those teams folded, Johnny went on to found and inform the Kirkland Lake Greyhounds, where he was both a, he was a player-coach. They won seven senior Northern Ontario baseball titles. He coached a number of people that went on to play in NHL, including Larry Hillman. He coached Joel Maverick, he coached Frankie Malone. So, he was well-known in the community. He was also an avid curler, and would have gone to the Briers, except for a man named Ramsey, who went on to win. So, I don't think that's any shame that he didn't make it to the, to the Brier. Now, to get to some of the other things, oh, he also coached Mickey Redmond as well. Bob was telling me that on one trip, and this was not unusual, Bob went along with his father as the bat boy, and after the game, when it was time to go to the restaurant, the Mines hadn't given them enough money for their meals, so Johnny just reached into his pocket and covered all the team's meals, and apparently, this, this happened quite often. Now, to get to the, some of the more interesting things. We're not quite sure exactly how short Johnny was, but it was either five-four or five-six. In other words, he wasn't a big man. He was missing a finger on his right hand, but fortunately for him, he was a left-handed baseball player, so that hand was in the glove, it didn't affect his game. But what I find the most interesting was, in addition to being a professional baseball player, he was also a professional gambler. And the whole time that he lived in Kirkland Lake, he ran the gambling room, and Bob said every night, his dad would put on a suit, put on a hat, and go to the gaming room. And he only, he only got Bob's original, him and the original conversation, and Bob's words pinched once. And the feeling was, the police kind of turned a blind eye because of all the other things he did in the community, and then, and for the sports. Oh yeah, it was Lakeshore that had the, the third team, if my notes were in order, but they're kind of like by mind, they're scrambled, so they just come out. Johnny died in nineteen sixty, and in nineteen seventy, he was inducted into the Saskatchewan Sports Hall of Fame. So, he lived in Kirkland Lake a lot longer than he lived in Saskatchewan, and that's, that's quite an honor to be inducted into any Hall of Fame. It just shows you the significance, he played in that community as well. So, Bob has a picture, photograph of his dad on the basis. Apparently, before every game, he'd go to every base and check and make sure it was placed right and to the right measurements. That was part of his ritual. And from that, he painted a portrait. The portrait is valued at between three and four thousand dollars, and he has donated that portrait to the town of Kirkland Lake, with the idea of it being hung in the lobby of the Kirkland Lake Community Complex. So, Joanne, if you could get the painting now, please?
And that's the first time Johnny Stoyan's been called.
I have a resolution that I've been asked to read. It's moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council accept the artwork donation from Mr. Rob Pananen, and the council recommend to staff that wall space in the complex reception area be used to display the picture.
Just a point, we do also have the Hall of Fame in the museum, where you have a climate, climate controlled as well, and it's, would not fit with the accessioning process, and there is usually a recommendation process as well that goes in, but just suggesting that that could be another setting.
Councillor Owens?
Yes, I did talk to the artist about climate control, and he's not concerned at all about it. It is an acrylic painting with a heavy clear coat of varnish on it to protect it from the environment. His feeling was that we are losing our sports history, and I kind of agree with him. During this, my discussions with him and with another Kirkland Lake person who was at Town Hall this year, they both brought up a boxer whose last name was Williams, like, he had a nickname, I forget what the nickname was.
Kid Williams, yep.
Kid Williams. And, you know, when I moved to Kirkland Lake in eighty-two, I used to hear stories about him. Now, I don't hear anything. And the idea of putting in a complex was that that gave it high visibility, the complex is the recreation sports center in the town, and that that part of our history would not be lost there. But he had absolutely no concerns. He goes to the complex every day and walks, he knows what the humidity is. So, he has no concerns about the humidity or the climate, the temperature.
Any further comments? All in favor? Passed, unanimous. Thank you. Hockey, oops, sorry, Heritage North interim facility manager.
In following with the art theme today, here to present an exciting opportunity for the lounge at Heritage North. A group of professional artists, to which we call the Kirkland Lake Arts Club, has expressed an interest in donating a mural to the lounge for kind of an appreciation for the town's past support for their efforts. And I'll have to read this out, because this has actually been an educational, I've learned quite a bit in, in speaking with them, but a triptych, measuring ten feet by forty-five inches. This would be completed on finished plywood, and it will be removable, so it'll be attached to the wall by method of dovetail slot groove. It will embrace the rich heritage of Kirkland Lake, what it has to offer to its residents as well as tourists. The past will be represented in a silhouette in the background at the top, and then concepts of the present, so for example, the complex, something new in the forefront, and a little bit of a depiction of the future as well. They also wanted to include the environment as well, so the four seasons are going to span horizontally, starting left to right. A number of great professional artists here, which I'm sure some of us have been privileged to see some of their work. The, sort of, a little bit of background, currently, right now, in the lounge, we have a five-by-twelve footish large picture frame, and inside that, a signature board bearing signatures of notable individuals that visited the facility when it was a hockey museum. So, there's about sixty signatures on that board, or about one-fifth of the board is filled. We actually identified some minor damage to the frame, so that's how this opportunity arose. And in fixing the frame itself, we had removed the panels, and then this opportunity for perhaps something a little bit more colorful came about. So, Heritage North expenses would be limited to just the purchases, supplies, the wood, paints and brushes as well, estimated about two-hundred-and-thirty dollars, and this would be drawn from the operating budget allocated to facility maintenance.
Discussion?
So, I have a resolution, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, councillor Owen?
So, from your presentation, you mentioned that it was a removable piece, right? So, if we were to sell or repurpose that building again, and the piece of artwork was not appropriate for, it would maintain, it would be removed, or could be removed if we sold the building and maintained property of the town of Kirkland Lake?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
It's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. The council approves the installation of a mural produced by the Kirkland Lake Arts Council in the Heritage North Lounge area.
All in favor? Unanimous, passed. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Sherry, on the two thousand and nineteen tax booklet?
There isn't much to this one, it's just one of the standard things that we do each year, now that the financial statements have been completed and they were approved at the August thirteenth meeting. So, what we do is, we just do a, it used to be a booklet, but now, to save costs, we put it on the website. We will have a few copies downstairs, in case somebody wants to look at them on the counter, but that will pretty much complete two thousand and eighteen, so the financial statements, the FIR, has been filed as well with the ministry, so that is complete as well. So, just in case there's any questions, but other than that, this is just mainly, like I said, housekeeping task.
I'd just like to note, sorry, councillor White?
I just wanted to thank Sherry and the rest of the team for just being so fabulous with us as a new council, and with the public as well. I don't think we've ever seen a more transparent and thorough process, and you've been so patient with us, as we learned. So, thank you so much for doing everything you did.
I did, for that, I agree, and it's nice that you've kind of outlined what, during the budget process, what council's objectives were, so hopefully, we can meet that. So, thank you, Sherry. Yep.
It's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council approves the booklet, two thousand and eighteen financial review and the two thousand and nineteen budget, and that the treasurer make it available to the public online and at Town Hall.
All in favor? Approved.
Yeah, so this is a request, it's a letter that comes in every year from Kirkland Lake Pro-Life. They do what's called their pro-life chain, which is when a group of people stand on the sidewalks along Government Road, between Oaks Avenue and McChesney. They do it for an hour, between two and three in an afternoon on a Sunday, and they're looking for council to just endorse that it's okay for them to do this on Sunday, October sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Councillor Owens?
Since they're not blocking traffic, excuse me, they're not blocking traffic, it's not impeding anything for normal flow on Government Road, is it absolutely necessary for us to even have to approve this or something? Could this just be done through administration, or just do it, do as you see fit, without necessarily getting their support for it?
Definitely. This is just, this is something that, that I believe they probably started many, many years ago, just to bring, you know, just some kind of knowledge to what they're doing. It, it is not something that needs a parade permit, they do not need, nothing needs to be blocked off. If it's council's direction that, that the council, that staff do administratively, then we can do that also.
I feel it's something like twenty-seven years, things have changed a lot, I think it's time to, it doesn't need to come through council, that's my opinion on this one.
Councillor White?
I definitely agree with Casey, there's nothing actually political that we need to make a decision on with this particular thing. It's a group of individuals wanting to stand on a sidewalk. They're not asking us for any permits or anything, so this isn't something that we need to make a decision on. It could definitely fall within the day-to-day scope of administration.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, in Canada, we have the privilege of freedom of assembly and freedom of speech, and so they don't even need to ask the town's permission, as long as they're not obstructing the day-to-day operations of the sidewalk or roadway. Under the Constitution, they have every right to go out there, and I agree with Casey, it's something I hadn't thought of before, but it doesn't need to come to council, and probably shouldn't come to council in the future. I guess my problem with it coming to council is that some taxpayers could take it as an endorsement of a certain political stance, which some of us may have, some of us may not have, but certainly, the town doesn't have a stand on it. So, by keeping it away from council meetings, it will keep away any misconceptions about where council stands on the issues.
I agree. I don't think they're officially requesting support or permission, so, because it's not required, so we acknowledge we received it.
It's moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The request from Kirkland Lake Pro-Life is an event, will be carried out in a peaceful, pacifist manner, and will take place on public sidewalks, not requiring the closure of any road. Therefore, council refers the request from the Kirkland Lake Pro-Life to the clerk to handle administratively.
All in favor? Fire chief Rob Adair, sole sourcing the truck cap for the fire rescue truck?
Good afternoon. Yeah, I'm here to ask to authorize a sole-source purchase for the truck cap for the rescue unit. Seventy-five thousand has been budgeted in capital for the purchase of the truck, and RFP has gone out for the purchase of the truck. It's estimated to be around forty-five thousand. The price of the cap, approximately ten thousand, and lights would be around six thousand, keeping us within budget. The cap is a specialized piece of equipment for specific firefighting, firefighting applications to which no one else is capable of supplying. The exact cap is custom fabricated for the OFM by Weber's Fabrication. We could write up the request proposal and find three people to quote on something similar, because the cap is custom fabricated, specific to the OFM, or we could go with a sole purchase.
Any comments, councillor White, or, sorry, councillor Owen?
Is this just for the cap alone?
Just the cap alone.
Okay. Now, the equipment that you require for this type of vehicle, do we already have that equipment?
We already have the equipment, yeah.
Okay. Normally, I am totally against sole sourcing anything when it comes to spending the corporation's money, the taxpayer's money. In this case, because it's such a specialized piece of equipment, and I do believe that the approximate price is a reasonable price for a custom fabricated cap, I would be supporting the idea of going to sole source sourcing, but don't get excited about that, because it's not something I normally do.
Don't order the new fire truck, Rob, yet. Any other comments?
It's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council approves the sole-source purchase of a cap for the fire department three-quarter ton truck from Weber's Fabrication, as presented in the report by the fire chief.
All in favor? Unanimous, passed. Thank you. Bonnie Sackrider, Director of Community Services?
On occasion, various departments within the town get requests for passes or something that they are able to give away to a specific group, so this is one of those situations. And during last year, when we did budget, council wanted to make sure that council was aware of any time that giveaways happened, and we made sure that we tracked them, and we accounted for them, and that they certainly could be tracked under the community grant. So, this is one of those requests that has come forth. It is from the Northern College Students Association, and they are looking for passes to the complex and to the museum for their frosh kits. So, school started today, and they are fine, if, if this does get approved, to give out the passes later this week, and the value is there. What we are suggesting, if council does want to approve something like this, that the value of the passes that are turned in go against the community grants. So, both the museum and the complex are able to track how many passes have come in from something like this, and then that value would be put against community grants.
Any comments, councillor Adams?
Yep, certainly in favor, if we want to track it that way, that's what I was going to ask anyways, so if we track them and, you know, use a hundred, then that's pretty good, so it's a great welcome to our community, and show off our amenities to the students in our area, so.
Councillor Owens?
I'm not a big fan of this, simply because most of students, when they graduate, are going to leave the community, that's a given. Second off, we've got people in this community that are taxpayers, hard-working people that are just getting by, and if we were to give away free passes, I'd rather see them go to the people that are actually supporting the upkeep, maintenance and staffing of the facility than people that are here for nine months a year. When I went to college and when I went to university, we certainly didn't get free passes to museums, we didn't get free passes to the complex. Northern College has its own gym facility, I believe it still has its own weightlifting facility, as did the colleges and the university, as did the college and the university I went to. I think that's where the students should work out, if they want to work out, and that doesn't cost the taxpayer anything. And so, I'm not in favor of, of giving away, even if it's in the terms of lost revenue, freebies to temporary residents.
Councillor Casey?
I'd have to agree with councillor Adams on this one, if we're tracking it, I think it's a good initiative to try and promote the community. A lot of colleges and universities in Ontario... to try and promote the community. A lot of colleges and universities in Ontario, uh, have these types of programs with municipalities where they offer free bus passes or some type of pass to the amenities they have. We don't have a bus services, so, a bus service, so this would be the next best thing. I think if we want Northern College to survive in Kirkland Lake, we also have to, s- I don't know. No, I don't see necessarily as a freebie, but it's an incentive to, to, to encourage students to come to Kirkland Lake, whether they plan on staying here or not, but I, I think it's a good, uh, good initiative.
Counselor Ivanov?
I also agree with, uh, Counselor Adams. I think it's a great way of, uh, sampling our facility. I think people, uh, from Northern College, especially frosh students, or they're, they're new to Kirkland Lake, great way them having a chance to look at the complex and maybe down the road buy a membership if they want to, or, uh... So it's a, I think it's a great way of, uh, promoting and advertising, uh, and helping out Northern College at the same time.
Thank you. Bonnie, correct me if I wasn't listening, if you can slack my wrist. Did you... Are these tracked as to how many are actually used?
We will track them, yes.
Have they been used in the full hundred? In, in the past?
They're requesting a hundred. So they did do this last year, and, um, we had multiple years that we were collecting at the same time, so we didn't track year to year. We had about sixty that came in over a, probably a three-year period, so... But we will track them for just, we'll have them dated for this year, so we'll be able to report back to council exactly how many came in at both locations.
I, I agree with my fellow counselors that it's, uh, certainly, uh, it's a welcome to the community and, uh, for the out-of-towners coming in and, uh, for the local, uh, students as well to use it. We do support the college, and we certainly want to keep it here, so I do support it. Any further comments? Oh, Counselor Perrier.
Um, I have to side with, uh, Counselor Rick on this because I think we turn down people from Kirkland Lake looking for stuff, and we go and give, uh, passes out to temporary people, so I, I can't see justifying that.
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, Joanne, can I have a recorded vote on this, please?
So the motion, we knew it's to be appealed by Council Dennis Perrier, so we got counsel's approval. This is just to bring awareness to the public, it doesn't need to actually... The council approves the request for the county to passes for the museum and complex for two thousand and nineteen, the Northern College students. And at the corresponding extent, it will be taken from the community grant account of the economic development budget. So we're going to record voting, start with Counselor Patrick Adams, yea or nay?
Yea.
Counselor Ivanov, yea or nay?
Yea.
Counselor Rick Owen, yea or nay?
Nay.
Counselor Casey Owens, yea or nay?
Yea.
Counselor Dennis Perrier, yea or nay?
Nay.
Counselor Stacy White, yea or nay?
Yea.
Uh, Mayor Pat Kylie, yea or nay?
Yea.
So we have five yays and two nays, so it passes.
Passed as presented. Thank you. Manager of Planning and Land Development? Or designate? Rick Champagne? Charbonneau, change your...
He's drinking early.
Good afternoon, everybody. So my, my first report tonight is to request the, uh, the fall-free residential tipping fees for two thousand and nineteen, being September twenty-third to September twenty-ninth. Uh, the fall-free tipping fees came into place in two thousand and eleven and in essence has become a tradition in Kirkland Lake. Um, it affords the residents an opportunity to get rid of some of the, like in the spring, uh, get rid of some of their unwanted trash, uh, without the added cost in the fall, some accumulation over the summer. We're also requesting, uh, additional staff hours on Sunday, September twenty-ninth, from eight AM to twelve PM to better facilitate those that, uh, can't make it out other than on the weekends. Um, we will, if, if, if so council chooses, we will offer the, uh, the electronics drop-off bin at Dunfield as well for the, for the week period. So the options are to offer the, uh, the fall-free tipping from, uh, September twenty-third to September twenty-ninth, or to not offer that. Any questions?
Just to clarify, uh, Rick, when we were doing curb pickup, those costs amounted to close to eighty thousand?
Absolutely. And when we did curbside in the spring, uh, the fall free tipping didn't exist. It was just spring curbside, that was it, till the following year. Uh, when they abolished the, um, due to, due to cost, um, the curbside collection, they brought in, uh, the, the additional free tipping fees in the week in the fall. So we have two weeks in the spring, one week in the fall.
Thank you. Counselor Ivanov?
Yeah, no, I think we should, uh, continue with the, uh, free tipping. Uh, get rid of some of the refugees kicking around people's yards. I think, uh, it's time that we gave, uh, Kirkland Lake residents, uh, a little bit back after, uh, some of the, uh, bad PR we've had in the last, uh, couple of weeks. I think this wouldn't be, uh, harmful at all. I think, uh, uh, there's lots of, uh, people that can use, uh, uh, the free tipping to get rid of some of this garbage. It would be normally sit around till spring, and then they'll get rid of it when the free tipping comes in the spring, so I think it's a great idea.
It's moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The council approves fall-free residential tipping fees at the Kirkland Lake landfill site from September twenty-third to September twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, and that council approves the electronic drop-off event location.
All in favor? Denominous. You're still on, Rick?
My next report is to do with the cyclical review of the instrument approaches at the, uh, at the airport. Um, and the council, um, approve and engage OkTont aviation for the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and, uh, sixty cents to perform that. NAV Canada used to be the governing body that would perform this at no charge to, to airports. And it's a subsidiary of Transport Canada. Since that time, around two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, NAV Canada announced that they will no longer be doing that service for us, uh, at all, free of charge or otherwise. And that we'd have to source out, uh, companies that could perform that. And what it is, is the, the airport has three instrument approach landing procedures. Uh, two on, uh, runway two-six and one on runway zero-eight. And it's a series of, of flight patterns through the circuit, uh, that they complete to verify and, uh, assure accuracy in our publications, and that, uh, ensures confidence, uh, for pilots when they fly in and out of, uh, Kirkland Lake. Um, we, we did, we did go to RFP, we had three submissions. OkTont is preferred, um, they've been here before, they know the airport, uh, um, and we're, we're pretty satisfied that they'll be able to complete this in a timely manner. We, uh, we do have, uh, through our budget deliberations, we have twenty-five thousand dollars in operating for this review. So it comes well within budget, and, uh, this is something that we're going to have to do every five years, so OkTont will maintain it, if should we hire them, or one of the other ones, they, uh, they'll maintain it for five years. And then we have to go back out to RFP again. If, if we don't do this, then we can't publicize what our instrument approaches are. Rendering the airport, daylight hours, sunny skies. Flights only. These procedures are, are instrument flight rules. Uh, so a pilot doesn't necessarily have to see where he's going. He's got all his, his gauges, his instruments telling him where the ground is, the right trajectory, and ever he can land safely with his eyes closed, and take off safely with his eyes closed. If we don't do it, they can't do that. It's just daylight hours, sunny skies.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, uh, Richard, when was the last time this work was done? Do you know?
This is actually the first time we've had to go out and hire somebody for it. Because traditionally NAV Canada would do that for us, and they would automatically correspond with Transport Canada, and they'd update our publications at no fee whatsoever to us.
Okay.
But being a government service, it, it has been downloaded onto the municipality, so...
And you answered my other question. You have the money and the budget, it's not an add-on, so...
It's, uh, it's an operating...
I, I certainly would support this, uh, so we can maximize the, uh, revenue out of the airport.
Counselor Ivanov?
Does this affect your ambulance also, Rick?
It, it definitely would. Uh, we, we get a lot of air ambulances during the, um, the dark hours. And that right there, uh, without this, they, they won't come in.
Okay. I support you also.
Thank you.
Counselor Perrier.
Well, basically, what you're saying is this is a safety concern.
It's a safety concern, uh, for the pilots and, and those involved in aviation, um, definitely. It gives them s- confidence, uh, if they can't see the runway. They know if they set their instruments at, at those, those coordinates, they're, they're going to come in safely, and they can take off safely without hitting a tower, trees, mountains, with anything that could be... Well, there's, there's a couple right in our, our flight path.
So it's basically something we really can't overlook?
You can't overlook, not if you want to run it back the way we've been running it.
Thank you.
Any further comments, questions? That'll come back as a bylaw. Ashley Billado?
All right, I have a few to get through tonight, so I'm going to try and make them a little quicker, and if there's questions, by, by all means, ask away. Uh, the first one is a request to purchase six lots around seventeen Hilton Avenue. Uh, the purpose of purchasing the land was to install a permanent water service line over the properties. Uh, we are recommending approval of the land sale. Uh, it's very unlikely that those lots were going to be developed. They are unsurfaced pieces of land, uh, topographical issues, um, and, and heavily vegetated, vegetated at this point. Um, so at this point, we are recommending that council proceed with, uh, with signing an agreement for purchase and sale with the owners, or with the potential purchaser, sorry.
Ashley, is it safe to say, or reasonable to say, this property is basically useless to anybody else?
It depends on how much somebody would like to spend in order to be, make it useful.
Without spending a small fortune.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to see development on those. We did retain, uh, the intent was for the two pieces that are closer to Branch Street to be retained, uh, as those were the most developable pieces in our mind.
That's coming back as a bylaw? Bylaw enforcement update?
Yep. This was a request from council to get an update on bylaw enforcement. I also included property standards as part of this, uh, this update. So to, um, since TIPS has started about three months ago, we've, we've had about eighty activity requests lodged. Uh, sixty of them have been resolved, and there are approximately twelve minor bylaw infractions that we're currently working with. There, if you do the math, there's about eight that are outstanding from, um, uh, clean yards community standards perspective, and two property standards, uh, issues that are, are very prevalent that we're trying to deal with right now. So, um, we did put, uh, a little bit of a table together. Uh, you're going to notice that if you calculate it, the phone calls and inquiries received are not going to add up to eighty. That's because there is multiple phone calls on maybe one property, so the eighty represents eighty properties. Uh, tickets issued, it does not include the tickets issued from the OPP. This is just TIPS. I wanted to also mention that they've also been working on the licensing of all taxi vehicles and, um, and sort of patrolling the streets for parking enforcement as well. So as I had mentioned previously, we have about ten major property issues that we are, that are in violation, that we are dealing with. And we did, um, we did commence the, or commissioned the cleanup, uh, of two properties so far. That is going to be back, charged back to the properties of the roll files, or the roll, uh, their tax rolls. Uh, there's one more cleanup pending, depending on, uh, what happens with the, uh, response that we've, or that we get from the owner. Uh, there are a couple of property standards issues that are being reviewed by legal, and their course of action is going to be evaluated by staff to determine next steps, so they're in the works. So there, there's no decision to be made, it's just a general update for you guys and for the public to say that we are moving ahead with this. Questions, concerns?
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, okay, most, most of the action taken by TIPS is complaint, uh, started. Uh, my concern is especially with parking in the wintertime. How much time is, uh, TIPS dedicated, dedicating to the town for, say, parking enforcement along government road, where we have, uh, those new no, no parking signs up now, telling them what months they can't park? Um, how much time are they going to be spending on, uh, overnight parking, once we have our overnight parking restrictions in place? Is, is that, are all these things going to be just strictly complaint-oriented? Or do we have a specific, uh, amount of time we're going to get from them? Because especially the government road one, um, to me, that's a big safety factor. And in fact, one of our firefighters thanked me after we passed that because he said, "When you're driving the fire truck, it's, in the wintertime through there, it's very, very difficult, and without cars on that side, it'll make a huge difference for them, make it safer for them." So, um, the overnight thing, I'm not as concerned about because I, I think the OPP traditionally have dealt with that and probably would continue to, but they're being downloaded on too, so they may not have the manpower, and we may have to rely on TIPS to, uh, enforce that as well. So I, I, I'd like you to, uh, either answer it now, which I don't think you probably can, which is fine, I understand, or, uh, to come back to an open council meeting with, with answers to those questions so the public will know that, yes, we are going to enforce, um, because there's still a feeling. I, I get the, in talking to people, I get the feeling that they think they can still get away scot-free. And, uh, I want them to know before they get the ticket that, no, that's not the case.
Parking is the only one that we would say, it, it, we do deal with complaints for parking, but they are also actively patrolling the streets, and tickets are being issued for parking infractions that don't receive a complaint or an activity request generated. Uh, overnight parking, that's definitely something we spoke of, two TIPS already. Uh, we do plan on having them, especially in that, uh, first couple of weeks where those rules are implemented. They, they will be patrolling the street overnight. We have special constables that are also working on that.
Um, are we still going to, like, the first few days, give out, uh, mock tickets, just to be fair to the residents?
Yep.
Because they're already upset with us, and I don't want them to be really upset with us.
It'll be the same process that we've had for years.
Counselor Ivanov?
Uh, Ashley, I just wanted to remind you that last year we had complaints from, I think it was Federal Tavern and Fern's Restaurant, where she starts work at three in the morning, and she got tagged by the OPP, and the Franklin Tavern. So I just, you know, I don't want TIPS to go out and go crazy and start tagging people. Guy who pulls in to get chicken wings at, uh, midnight at the, at the Franklin Tavern gets a ticket for stopping in for fifteen minutes to get a chicken wing. All right, so I just, you know, tease a little, a little bit of discretion when they're out there doing that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Counselor White?
Um, I'm certainly pleased to see, um, some of the success that they've had with the community standards. Um, not only does it have a huge impact in the neighborhoods and, and the neighbors, um, that are alongside of these issues, but it really does contribute to overall community pride. Um, and as noted, I would completely support, um, allocating more funds towards, um, the cleanup of these properties in the future, twenty-twenty, barring any more downloading from other levels of government. I think really for the sense of community pride and, and over aesthetic of the community, we really do have to start getting serious with these community standards issues.
Yeah, these comments are a little bit of an extension of what Counselor White is saying. Uh, and the registration of properties and the delays that have taken place. Uh, we, council had asked for an inventory or at least a count of, uh, how many properties are registered, and how many that are in a situation time-wise that could be registered. Because, uh, because of the delays in registering and acting on the properties, it leads to pigeons and derelict of...
it leads to pigeons and derelict of properties. So, uh, council would like to see that report. I know I'm probably putting somebody on the spot here, but I wonder when we might, uh, get, get that, uh, report.
I think that we can pull it together for the next council meeting. It's just the report on, uh, the numbers. Uh, we'll go into details for issues and that, but we'll probably get that to you and, uh, we should be able to tell you where we are with real tax at that point, too.
Okay. Much appreciated. Any other comments on this subject? Community Improvement Plan, I guess?
Yeah.
Or... Okay. Yep, go ahead.
The, um, so the Community Improvement Plan, we did pass that. Uh, the applications, we have not published the website at this point because there has been no money allocated into, uh, the Community Improvement Plan, um, budget. So at this point, the Community Improvement Plan specifies that there should be any contribution of fifty thousand dollars. We haven't allocated that money in the 2019 budget. I am looking for some direction on how council wants to proceed with hearing applications. So I do know of five individual companies that have approached me about utilizing this, this application process and wanting more information. I've sort of put a, a halt to it until I get some direction from council on how they'd like to proceed.
Counselor White?
Of course, this would be one of mine. Um, I would definitely like to see staff work with these companies and bring back a report on the approximate cost that we would be looking at to grant through the 2020 budget. And if we could get a head start on the applications so that when the time comes next year, there'd be no further delays for these companies that are interested. Um, that's the way I would prefer to proceed, that we get some solid numbers from your department on what we're looking at.
Excuse me, but Counselor, you're suggesting for 2020, not 2019?
No, for 2020, get a report within approx, right, with an approximation for 2020 so that when we go into budget talks, we'll know approximately what we should be or what we could be coming up with, if at all possible.
I, I believe with the consultants, they had suggested a lump sum and that breakout. Uh, we could suggest where we would see most of the demand for that. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah. 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 And there'll be a couple of these that will not, no longer apply because they're doing the work this summer as well.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you, I know we didn't put any money in the budget for this. Um, it was a difficult process, as you're well aware, the budget. Um, do you think we will, any of these, uh, people that are interested in applying will not do the work if they don't get the money this year? Like, they'll just leave their storefront or their expansion or whatever?
They're, they're pressed for time. They need to get started on it. It, they would have been nice to get the money as the way that...
Um, but if we wait till approved money until the 2020 budget, will that stop any of these projects?
It might hold them for another year.
We, we honestly just can't answer that because that's everybody individually, yeah.
No, but I mean, you have a feeling, like, I mean, generally speaking, when I'm dealing with somebody who's applying for something, you get some sort of feeling. I'm not asking for something written in stone. I'm just concerned, like, okay, we're kind of between a rock and a hard spot here. We don't have the money. We approved the plan and I'm trying to see if you, if, just a feeling that these projects would still go ahead.
Yeah.
That's all I'm looking for, not something to hold you to, your feet to the fire with.
I, I think the other thing too, Counselor Owen, uh, that we should come up with a number in early January because if the budget process isn't finished until March, or April first, or mid-April, uh, we can't keep these people waiting. It could jeopardize some people going ahead with it. So I, I agree with you, but I think we can come up with a number preliminary rate that we would include in the budget, uh, in advance. At least then we would know where we're going or what, uh, at least get a head start on it. I will say that, uh, we have, uh, scheduled a meeting with the Economic Development Committee for mid-month. Uh, so some of this information has to be passed on to them and any other recommendations that, uh, come out of that meeting, which we will, uh, bring back to council as well. Counselor Owens?
Yeah. Well, after the way the budget went this year, I sincerely hope that we will start the budget process extra early, uh, for, for 2020 and, and present the earliest budget that's ever been presented in this town. We, I, I believe as an elected counselor that we owe that to the ratepayers after what we put them through this year. And, and, uh, you know, if you want to start the budget tomorrow, I'll be there.
It started last week, actually.
I concur. But for direction, there is no allocations for 2019. We plan for 2020. And we would propose a, as per the plan, a fifty thousand dollar contribution be, uh, as, or as fifty thousand dollar fund be established that would be used with the CIP for 2020.
I don't know if we can put that fifty figure to it yet. I, I agree with, uh, Counselor White that, uh, we, we need an indication of just where we're going, what we need, what the needs are. But certainly to, uh, in early January to, to, uh, come up with a figure, whether it be fifty or sixty, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Or less. Was that a fair comment?
I think my only concern is that if you have fifty thousand dollars in the budget, it will get spent.
If you have twenty, it will be spent, yeah.
If you have twenty, it will get spent. If you have a hundred, it will get spent.
And, 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 sorry.
Counselor White?
Sorry. No, with these five that have already approached you, this is what I was going after, that if you have already five people that were like, "I want to jump on board. I want to be part of this", get that number because we, the reality is 2020 may be just as difficult for us as this year was as far as downloading, et cetera. So if we have, between now and January first, if you only have these five, then we have a better concrete number of, we may only have to allocate the twenty-five. Or, you know, do you understand what I'm getting at? That it's better to base it on concrete requests than...
It'll be a good indicator. You're right. I agree.
So it's move by the applications again.
Okay.
It's moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perier. The council has received the Community Improvement Plan report from the manager of Planning and Land Development and direct staff to postpone all applications to the fund to be considered as part of the 2020 budget year and that a report from staff with more detail be presented to council before 2020 budget discussions.
All in favor? Pass. unanimous?
So my next report has to do with updating the terms of reference for the Committee of Adjustment. Uh, the committee recently completed training through the Interior Association of Committee of Adjustments and Consent authorities. And with that became, or they ended up getting a lot more knowledge on, um, the inner workings of the Committee of Adjustment. So as a result of this new knowledge, they've requested some modifications to the terms of refer, reference. So recommendations are recommended as well by staff to, uh, to council for updating.
Any comments, discussion? Counselor Adams, sorry?
Yep. Just want to say, uh, thank you for showing the changes in the policy. It's one of my favorite things. So thank you for showing that and love it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's moved by Counselor Dennis Perier, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The council approves the updated Committee of Adjustment Terms of References as presented.
All in favor? Pass. unanimous?
The next report deals with a decision that was made by the Committee of Adjustment for a minor variance at O'Keefe Tire. Uh, the store, um, it was to approve two storage containers on the property. Um, as part of the decision-making process, they added conditions to that approval. Uh, and the condition is to formulate an agreement, so for council to formulate an agreement with the owner to ensure that if the property is no longer being used as part of O'Keefe Tire's operation, that the storage containers will cease to be, uh, on the property. That's just to prevent somebody from purchasing a separate piece of property and using it for storage purposes, which would not be compatible with the zoning bylaw, as long as it maintains an accessory use. Um, it was, it was, it was passed by the committee that they'd be all right with that. The also thing that they wanted added within the agreement was to ensure that the storage containers looked pretty so that they were painted with similar colors as the business. So those are stipulated in the agreement and have attached it for your review. Are there concerns?
Does this relate to the O'Keefe Tire? Uh, I'm a little confused on this one. They already have the container there.
Yes.
And now we're looking for minor variance?
No, the minor variance has already been approved. It's conditional on the agreement being registered, or being signed by council. So they were a little preemptive with placing the container there, but yes, the, the agreement is, that the decision was passed. It's just the agreement that needs to be finalized.
Counselor Owen?
I know at the, at the committee level, there was concern about what these containers would look like. Well, I'm pleased to report that, as Ashley said, they are very pretty. And they are painted in, uh, colors similar to what the building is. They have a nice advertisement sign on them. They're well-placed. And there everything that the owner of the business promised would happen. Um, I'm certainly pleased to see the cooperation we got from that owner and I just want to thank him for living up to his word.
Coming back. To Government Roads?
Okay. So we received a request from the owners of two Government Road West. They also own, uh, a couple of properties adjacent to that, which is the Park Lane, uh, to waive tipping fees associated with renovating or retrofitting the building into a hotel. So the calculation from what we can gather is about forty yards of, uh, like, how many, sorry? Two hundred construction bins, so two hundred forty yard bins of waste in order to complete the project, which results in a total revenue of eighty-four thousand dollars. So the request would be to waive eighty-four thousand dollars with the revenue for, uh, in order to meet the, what they're asking. So not to get into all the nitty-gritty of the report because I'm sure you've already gone through that. Um, the recommendation that count, or that staff are making to council was to waive a portion of the tipping fees. So, uh, ensuring that it happens before June of 2020 and maxing out at a total of twenty-five thousand dollars, which is approximately thirty percent of the total amount of tipping fees that they'd be having to pay for. And we're also, um, requesting that that wage be segregated so they can be placed appropriately in the landfill.
Counselor White?
That is a lot of money for a municipality that really cannot afford it. Um, I have asked and I have looked, what was the maximum we've ever, um, waived in the past? I personally, by searching, came up with five thousand dollars. Um, so that is a, a very large jump. Not that, on one hand, we really want to do, um, what we can for, um, business to come into Kirkland Lake, but that is a very, very large ask. And it's something at this point that I wouldn't be comfortable with because it's so outside of what we set precedent before as a town prior to this.
So, Counsel...
Go ahead. Well, I think it's what, uh, staff is wondering too. Uh, just to clarify, uh, the eighty-four or the twenty-five or both are too high? Both are too high? Okay.
Counselor Owen?
Well, I don't know. Anytime I bought a property, I looked at the property, I knew what I was buying and I knew what I wanted to do and I had a rough idea of what it was going to cost. And I think any reasonable businessperson that's buying a property would look at the price of the property, look at the property, um, figure out what his costs are going to be and then decide whether or not to buy the property. I'm a little, I'm always leery of giving away ratepayers' money, always. And I'm even more leery, uh, when we're giving away ratepayers' money to a for-profit business. However, this is a double-edged sword. Because if that property comes back into the hands of the town and we have to tear it down, we are probably looking at, from what I've heard, a million dollars. Uh, having said that, if I was to approve any vote in favor of any discount at all, I think Stacy has brought a good point. In the past, five thousand dollars has been the ceiling. I think, uh, when we subtract the five thousand dollars, we're still getting seventy-nine thousand dollars in revenue from the building. I could probably live with that, even though in principle I, I don't agree with it. But because I don't want the town to get the building back, I could live with it. But I, I certainly would not go above, anything above five thousand dollars, and I do that reluctantly.
Counselor Adams?
Um, helping businesses, that's why we kind of already voted to have a Community Improvement Plan, was to help businesses, uh, with these kinds of things. And it would come back as to increased value of the assessment, which comes back to more money into our pockets. So it's a small give and take. We have the program. Uh, we just saw in our last one that, uh, people are already applying for help to, uh, get their businesses going so that we can, uh, in the end, as what we voted for, was to get the money back through increased assessments. Eighty, eighty thousand dollars is a little bit way too much. Um, so certainly even in the reports that should council approve this request, it's recommended that approval be conditioned upon a timeframe and monetary cap. So kind of the discussion on the monetary cap is around five thousand. Uh, what kind of timeframe is recommended at this point?
We're suggesting June, June 2020. Um, we, we would suggest, uh, you know, till the end of June 2020. Um, if council sees fit, that, that should be pushed back, possibly till the end of August 2020. We'd be okay with that as well, but there should be, uh, a different, definite time cap line.
So that would be, they would have until June 2020 to do all their demolition and set aside or to get things started?
Uh, to actually...
Get everything out?
Get everything out of there and, and, and use the approval.
To, to use the five thousand dollars worth?
Yeah, yeah. So if we're looking at moving the Community Improvement Plan funding approval to around January, which is fifty thousand, this could possibly be one of those applications that can be decided upon, which is, which some of our recommendations.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I, I think that, I mean, if the demolition had to take place, you're looking at a million dollars for that building. I'm sure maybe more. And I think we should give them an incentive to try and get this building renovated and fixed up. And I think giving them a reduced tipping fee, uh, and I would say that we would have them tip at, say, two-thirds of the regular rate, uh, which would still generate a fair amount of, uh, revenue for the landfill. But at the same time, give them an incentive to get this thing, uh, done. I wouldn't just hand them five thousand bucks or ten thousand or twenty-five thousand. Say, you know, whatever the tipping fee normally is, we'll charge you two-thirds of it and you pay that. And at the end of, uh, whatever, June 2020, uh, that no longer applies. You could have to pay the full pin. That would be an incentive to get their ducks in a row and get that building, uh, fixed up. And I think at that time, we would generate some extra tax revenue from having that building. And, um, I think at the same time, we'd help this organization and get the Park Lane building uh, into a condition that, uh, people could actually live in it.
If I may comment, uh, I do agree with, uh, Counselor Ivanoff. I would be prepared to support up to a maximum of twenty-five using maybe the two-thirds formula. I am deeply concerned. That million-dollar figure is probably not too far out of whack. Uh, it's a big risk exposure to the, to the town. Um, and if that's the incentive to, for it to move on, that's my opinion anyway. Uh, Counselor White?
Is it possible to provide this kind of incentive in, in... Is it possible to provide this kind of incentive in increments? Can we, as part of the agreement, say, we will go five thousand here at this benchmark? And when you increase the value of the property, we can go, we can entertain the possibility of five thousand more? Like, can we do it in such a way to word it, that if you're showing us improvements on that property, we can entertain it again up to the maximum? And that way, we have more of a control?
I can see where, I can see where you're going, but if it was me, I would say, well, every time I take out another load of pigeon poop-infested asbestos, I'm improving the property. So you're kind of hitting your, your milestones. Like, if we go with the two-thirds, but it sounds like you're saying two-thirds to a cap of twenty-five, I, I think that's kind of constraining. You'd be either two-thirds or twenty-five.
The two-thirds is twenty-five thousand. Thirty percent.
You could always, you could always look at it, should, should council decide on, on the twenty-five thousand dollars, the two-thirds? If, if the, if the Park Lane people should need further assistance beyond that, maybe have, have them come to, to council and, and show you guys the scope of their project. That, that might be an opportunity, so they can come and, and say, hey, this is what we're doing, and this is why we need help.
Counselor Ivanoff?
My sense is that renovation's probably somewhere between three to five million dollars. And we're talking five thousand bucks on a five-million-dollar project, which is almost stupid, right? I mean, if I was doing that and somebody said to me, I'm not going to help you. I mean, don't give me five grand, because I'm not, you know, I'm talking five million dollars, and you're talking, going to give me five grand. That's a pittance. You know, that's, I don't think that, that's much of an incentive. I honestly think that when you're looking at something of that magnitude, you know, we have to make an incentive. And I don't think that five thousand dollars is an incentive.
Counselor Rowan?
I'd have to agree with Counselor Ivanoff on this one. I mean, if we end up with a building again, we're going to get screwed, so, and if they are putting a lot of money into it, then, you know, let's show faith in what they're doing. My only concern is, is there going to, once all this garbage starts coming out, is there going to be extra costs for us at the landfill with this contaminated stuff? Or is that assumed by them?
The extra costs, not necessarily extra work for the, for the contractor, absolutely. To have to process the waste, the, it'll take up a large space in the landfill, but it's neither, the way I'm thinking, it's neither here nor there. If they came and decided to, to pay for the tipping fees, it's going to happen, it's going to happen, right? So we still have to deal with it in the landfill perspective. We will be asking for, like, the segregation, which is like scrap metals, gold scrap metals, any free-on containing appliances that are left in that building that they wish to dispose of. They won't be exempt from the applicable fees, because we have to, we have to pay somebody to take the free-on out of these before we dispose them. So anything that's free-on containing air conditioners, refrigerators, and the like, will, will, will still be charged an applicable fee for each unit. Or it could be taken off that, that twenty-five thousand dollar.
Also are looking at multiple months. So if you're looking at what you're doing in 2019, then what you're doing in 2020, January, ask them to come in, make a presentation as to where their plans are. They've had the first shit, hit of what's going on. You can then see whether or not, yeah, I caught that. You can see whether or not that's going to, it comes when you learn German first, then English. It's very difficult, sometimes it comes back, to see what their plans are, if you wish to extend that into the, the next year. I, I agree, it is within the CIP parameters. It's stretching it a little bit, right? But it's really going to stretch a budget, but at least then you're, you know, right now, you're deferring revenue, as you had said with the other issue. It's not something you like, but you're giving them a, a start.
I do agree. And it kind of goes back to what Counselor White was saying. It's, it's like a progress advance for approval. I could live with giving them ten or fifteen thousand, then come back in January. Let's see how far they're going.
Counselor Rowan?
I kind of like, you know, Eugene's idea. It's something I hadn't thought of. And that's why we have discussions at the council table, so we can all get our ideas out. But I like the idea of charging them, even though it's well above the five thousand, two-thirds of the tipping fee. That way, we've got revenue coming in all the time. We're not doing all this and having no revenue come in. The other question I have is for Rick. How are we actually licensed to take that toxic waste that's going to be coming out of there, or does that have to go somewhere else?
How do you mean toxic waste?
I'm talking about the droppings of the pigeons, to say it politely.
I don't believe poop is toxic, but that would be up to the health unit to determine that. If there's any asbestos and things like that, that's, they have to do their asbestos abatement and things like that, prior to us to, to accept that kind of waste. But for toxicology and mold and mildew and pigeon poop, I don't believe that's harmful.
Well...
It would, it would, that would have to be defined somehow in, by the health unit, because in my, my experience, I've never, that doesn't come up as, as a toxic waste.
Well, I'm just, I'm just concerned about what we can and can't take at the dump before we jump on board here, because...
The MOECP won't, won't see that as a, as a hazard. They see hazardous waste as, it's a whole different criteria. Anything in that building, I haven't been in there, but I would assume there's nothing in there that would be deemed hazardous, unless it's some kind of solvent, if you will, or, or something like, along those lines. But pigeon scat and mold and mildew would definitely not meet that criteria.
I'd like to see something in writing before we start accepting that, because I know working in those conditions, you have to be specially dressed and whatever, and there has to be a reason for that. And the other thing that you mentioned was the asbestos. The little I know about it is that you have to remove it. You need a, I know we had it done at Northern News, you need a licensed contractor to come in. It all has to be packaged in a certain way, and it all has to be sealed off, but it can go to the dump once it's handled properly. So another concern I would have is that hidden amongst the other garbage is going to be a bunch of asbestos, which could potentially put the employees at the, at, at the landfill site in, in public health situations, because asbestos, as long as you don't touch it, is harmless. It's only when it is airborne. And again, it requires special ventilation masks, because the, the little sharp pieces that are in the air are so fine, they go through the regular masks. And I, but having said all this, I, I could support Eugene's idea of two-thirds, because it gives us revenue all the way along. But I think I would like an update as of January first, to see how far along they've gone, because work seems to start and stop and start and stop on that project. And I don't, I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Counselor Ivanoff?
What I like about the timeline is if you make it two-thirds up until a certain date, then at least you have, there's an incentive to get it done quickly. And instead, like Rick says, it stops and starts. If this, if there's an incentive to get it done by June 2020, well, there's the incentive. If you get it done by then, great. If you don't get it done by then, you're going to pay full tipping fees after that fact. So it may be, that may be the incentive they require to get that thing cleaned up.
Counselor White?
Like Counselor Rick said, that's why we have discussions at the table, because I was pretty hard and fast over, we've never done it in the past, and we shouldn't begin now, especially in these economic times. But I have to agree with Counselor Ivanoff, that because of our economic development needs at this time, I would be willing to go to the max of twenty-five thousand.
Just for some clarification, two-thirds with a drop dead date of June of 2020, but with a January update as to what the status is, and if it, if they haven't done anything, then they have to have an explanation. Any fees, like free-on whatever, that's above and beyond, that's not part of this package. I have to sound like a wet rag, but there is risk of precedent setting. Others will come forward. So in 2020, we have to do, we do have to establish how we're looking at this, what the value is, that to measure others. We do have that within the CIP, but I think that council will need to probably revisit that and clarify that. Is there anything else from staff that you need?
The actual, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Were you asking Rick?
No, no.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Counselor Rowan. The actual report on the usage could come from staff, it doesn't have to come from the company, right?
I would like to counter that and say that if somebody's sitting here asking for that much money from the taxpayer, they should be making a, a presentation.
Again, I still have my concerns that especially, well, the other stuff too, which I would like to see something in writing saying that we can accept it, and under what conditions we can accept it.
I'd like to go back to you and say that Rick can prepare, prepare a short report on what the C of A does not allow.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
And, and my other concern is the asbestos-bearing products. I, I can see that getting put in the dumpster, and we're exposing employees and contract employees to asbestos dust, which is something I, I don't know how we're going to monitor. I don't, I really don't, but I'm concerned about it.
You actually did put into the report that the waste should be segregated, so segregated and inspected?
They'll have, no, I'm not sure. I've never renovated a, a building of that size before, but in my experience with the municipality and others that have done such things with, maybe not that size, but close, the onus is on them to, to hire the professionals in those fields to, to, for asbestos abatement, like Gensalkana is one of the companies that does that, and they report to us. The onus is on them to ensure that what they're doing over there is legal, not us to ensure that what they're doing over there is legal.
But to revisit, they report to you, so we are aware of what's going on and what could show up at what time? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely. But if you get a container bin that's, you know, thirty cubic meters of, of waste, you're not going to go through that.
You're not going to go through it, yeah.
And then see what's, what's in there tooth and nail, you know? The, the onus is on the, on, on, on the companies that, that go in there. And a lot of these companies, they, they know that, so they know what they need to do. They know what they, what information they need to get to us. And we, we rely on that, and they communicate with us on whether we can accept that waste or not accept that waste.
Would that be okay with you?
As far as the pigeons go, and the scat, I, I really don't know what to tell you. I, I could ask the health unit. That's, yeah, I apologize, but I'll, I'll ask the health unit and see...
It sounds reasonable.
What, what they think of...
Yeah, that's fine. My, my concern is, my concern is for the workers. That's, that's my concern. And I don't think there's a simple answer to it. I can tell you that about ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of nine-inch by nine-inch tiles have asbestos in it. Any spray-on ceilings from about nineteen sixty backward, maybe a little later than that backward, there's a good possibility. Same with drywall mud. My concern is a health concern. I'm, I'm not concerned about whether they're in compliance. I'm concerned about putting workers at the landfill's health in jeopardy. That, that's my concern.
What we could do is, I mean, if they, if they try to go around disposing of that stuff improperly, if you will, we can do spot checks on what's being brought out, and we will do spot checks on what's being brought out. But legally, they need to hire a company that goes in there that specializes in, in that abatement. And they go in with the proper PPE, and they, they, they have to double-bag things, they let us know in advance, and then our contractor has areas ready for it to be buried right away, and things like that. But we, we will be doing spot checks.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, my guess, Rick, is with a, a, a project of that magnitude, Department of Labor is going to be there. They've been at that building already.
Absolutely.
And my sense is they're going to be going through that building with a fine-tooth comb to make sure these people are, are in compliance. And I, you know, I think we can worry about all this stuff, but I think, you know, there are provincial organizations that are commissioned with that, to make sure that's taken care of. And I, you know, I think we can drive ourselves crazy trying to follow up, but I, I think there really is somebody there that will look at that. I know they, they have been there already, they shut the project down already once, so I think they're going to be in there watching those people.
Routine inspections, building inspectors.
Common. I think it'll be very common, especially with a building, with that building and that project, the size of that project.
Any further discussion? Counselor Adams?
So the twenty-five thousand dollars, so does that come out of the operating budget for this year, or how, how does that...
It's deferred, and that's what I was looking at the treasurer for too. I'm sure that she would love to have some kind of consolidated number as we get close to the year end. That will come from Rick. I think that you may actually think, it may not be surprising to see the company rush forward and hit that twenty-five thousand dollar limit before, before December anyway, right? Because if they're actually looking at eighty-four thousand dollars worth, there's probably quite a bit more likelihood is they'll use up what we have already.
That's why I suggested two-thirds charge, so they pay as they go. It's not a...
It's, it's not a freebie where they, you know, they have to go, they have to continue to pay. So it's not going to be where they get twenty-five thousand bucks and then you don't get anything. You know, use up twenty-five thousand and stop fixing it. So if you charge them all the way along, the incentive is to continue cleaning up and to do it at a quicker pace.
And with the tipping fees and that, you're able to handle that, or, okay, because then you need to coordinate with Treasury on it, we can report back to that. I think that as you see it progressing, that January presentation to council, perhaps that should be done in December, so we have a better year-end conclusion. I'll talk to Treasury, sorry, Counselor Adams.
Counselor Adams?
So it's just that for fifty thousand dollars, if this were to be part of the community improvement plan, and we just let this one happen, that's, that's half of it. So the other applications, we have no idea what those applications were, and we're just doing that twenty-five. So the process that we voted on would be for this to go to the Economic Development Committee to decide. So the application comes in, it's reviewed by staff, goes to Economic Development, their input is required, and it comes back to council for a decision. So is this kind of following that process?
No, it isn't. And had it come forward just straightforward, I would not bring it forward, because it's already exceeds the entire budget, and there, I think that, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to collect my thoughts, I saw your hands going up. Based on the impact on the municipality, I think it's right to bring it to council to decide whether you even want to entertain it before sending it to a committee to discuss and then chew over. So that's when we had that discussion in, in staff as well, about the whole process here. In lieu of actual CIP in place, we went this route.
So the other ones that made the application through the community improvement plan, are they going to be told that they can come to council and get approval this way as well?
I don't believe that anybody put an application in. It was inquiries as to whether or not the, the fund was open. And I think that if we do open the CIP as an actual program, it should go through that course. Again, I would ask that if, when we see a very exceptional one, maybe, oh, I don't know, Boeing is going to come and build a, a jet factory here, we bring that one to council right away, so we have guidance on it, but...
Counselor White?
Sorry, I don't see this as part of the CIP program, because we do waiving of tipping fees without the CIP program. So I believe this was separate from that specific program that we knew we had no money for this year. I definitely see it as an operating hit from... I definitely see it as an operating hit from that department. So that's where maybe Patrick and I disagree a little bit.
I would argue you're not disagreeing. It's, like I say, it's an exceptional case. It's kind of the stuff, but it's not the stuff, you know. It's a relatively new request. Traditionally, we would, you know, grant tipping fees, free tipping fees or waivers, if you will, on residential areas that were demolishing buildings, houses. But this is a complete gut renovation. It's a little unique, so it's relatively new.
Where Counselor White's coming from, I have the same concerns, because if the amount we decide for the CIP is fifty thousand and twenty-five thousand of it's being used up, it's wiped out half of it already when we open the...
No, this is different. We have in... Well, former council has in the past waived tipping fees for businesses. The property at four seventy Government Road West, as a business, was allowed... Was allocated that five thousand. So I do see this not as part of the CIP program at all. This is something different that we've set precedent. The town of Kirkland Lake has set precedent before by waiving fees for companies. This is not a CIP to me at all.
And that prevents it from setting a precedence in the future, then?
Counselor Owen.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I seem to remember in the CIP that there was a maximum figure that each business could get, and I believe it was five thousand dollars, was it not?
There's also exceptions within the CIP that if you want to go above and beyond, it has to go to council for consideration. So I see where he's coming from as well, because the CIP does actually stay within it, that user fees can be either reduced or eliminated as part of the community improvement plan. But again, we have that provision, and if there's exceptional cases where it's going to make a big difference, council has the ability to go above and beyond.
Yeah, but a normal CIP application, the maximum per project is five thousand dollars. And we're looking at a lot more than five thousand dollars here, and we're looking at an extraordinary case and the effect it could have on the ratepayers and the downtown atmosphere. So I think it was right to bring this to council first.
And it's important to note that because of the uniqueness of the request and when it came in, that's not something we planned for and budgeted for accordingly.
Counselor Ivanoff.
Yeah, so I don't see this as part of the CIP either. I just think it's probably increased revenue for the landfill, because there's going to be a substantial amount of refuse going into the landfill. So I think when you do your budgeting process, I'm not sure how Sherri's going to work that out, but I would think that it's not... It's going to be increased income at two-thirds of the regular price for that amount of garbage that gets into the landfill site. So I think you could just see increased revenue. Go ahead.
It'll still be noted as a loss, because it's still going to reflect this much came in.
Yeah.
So you'll still have a deferred, like a...
Okay, so that...
It's... Yeah.
As long as you can figure out the bookkeeping, I'm good with it.
Yeah, it's a bookkeeping thing, but it'll show... It's not going to show as additional revenue. It'll be a loss. There'll be a loss noted.
Counselor Adams.
I'm a little confused on the CIP. Just section six point six, Building Renovation Improvement Grant, which specifically speaks to this item. It is a CIP issue, but I understand completely as to that this is a lot larger, and that's why it's at this point. But six point six, Building Renovation Improvement Grant, is very specific to these types of items.
Joanne, what do you come up with?
We have to officially decide that this is a CIP issue or wait for...
Counselor Trump.
I think we're both thinking the same thing. You don't have a CIP in place right now. Right? So this is your case before the council to decide, and yeah, and you're carrying it forward.
I have a motion that's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The council has received the report, Request to Waive Landfill Tipping Fees for the revitalization work on the former park lane, and direct staff to implement option two as presented, to be completed no later than June 2020, to offer two-thirds tipping fees to owner with maximum town contribution to twenty-five thousand. The waste is to be segregated, and an update be brought back to council by the owner in December 2019.
Are we comfortable with that? Any further discussion? All in favor?
I have one more report. Okay, so the last report I have to present is a request to purchase from Gary Hodgins for five hundred dollars. It's a corner lot. It's a fifty-by-forty lot, so not developable by any means. Mr. Hodgins brought in, filled a slope of the property in a safe manner, and has since maintained the property by cutting grass. It's since the, I think it's the eighties that he's been doing that. That's why we're recommending approval of the five hundred dollar price tag. So typically, when we sell land, we are roughly selling for about seventy-five cents per square foot when it's in addition to a property. This is a slightly reduced rate because of the work that was done on the property for the amount of years that he's lived there. So we are recommending approval of this, of this purchase, and declaring the property as surplus land. Any questions?
I would support that. I'm in close proximity to that property and go by there daily. Certainly, he has maintained, maintained that portion that he's looking at buying. And that strip of land is basically useless to anybody. You could never build on it. It just enhances the size of his property. So, and the fact that he's kept it, maintained it, leveled it off, and cut the grass over the years, several years, the reduced amount is reasonable.
Any other comments? Joanne.
We have two bylaws that are associated with this property, and since Counselor White has left the room, I thought it would be good to do the two bylaws now. So it's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The bylaw nineteen dash zero nine one, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of One Brown Avenue to Gary Hodgins, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed.
And the next bylaw has to do with the deeming of the lots, so that's merging them together. It's moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The bylaw nineteen dash zero nine two, being a bylaw to deem lots one forty-two and one forty-three of registered plan M one zero nine T, which is One Brown Avenue, not to be registered, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed. Unanimous. Reading and consideration of bylaws?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The bylaw nineteen dash zero eight six, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with the Center of Geographic Information Systems, CGIS, to provide spatial land information management system services, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous.
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The bylaw nineteen dash zero eight eight, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of lots on Hilton Avenue to Josh Fuller, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous. Passed.
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The bylaw nineteen dash zero eight nine, being a bylaw to name members to committees of council by adding Crystal Gorman to the Recreation Committee, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed. Unanimous.
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The bylaw nineteen dash zero nine zero, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with one three eight one seven six three Ontario Limited to allow storage containers at eighteen Prospect Avenue to be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed. Unanimous.
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The bylaw nineteen dash zero nine three, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Octant Aviation Inc. for a cyclical review of instrument procedures at the airport under RFP dash five four three dash nineteen, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed. Unanimous. No questions from counselor to staff? Notice of motions? None declared? Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The bylaw nineteen dash zero nine four, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held September third, 2019, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed. Unanimous. Counselors' reports? Counselor Adams?
Yeah, so at our recent DSAB meeting, August 21st, one of our items on the agenda was a funding increase of forty-two thousand dollars for a project for the additional renovation costs at the new Lisker Steppin Stone Daycare. The increase was required because a tender was made on an opinion of probable construction costs. This type of quote has a list of exclusions that specifically not budgeted for. Class D estimates all over it. Pretty much at this point, what we have done is we gave direction to staff at DSAB to come up with ideas as to how to prevent these things from happening again. And for other members of other boards, when you are having tender requests come forward, please make sure that these things are not under the classification of a class D estimate, because the DSAB is lucky enough to have strong reserves of forty-two thousand dollars. If not, this was at our municipality level, we'd be going back to taxpayers and requesting forty-two thousand dollars on top of what the project already was. So try and put the controls in place on the boards that you're on as well, just like we did here. And just be aware that these things do exist. It's nothing worse than coming back and seeing that there's a list of exclusions with the tender amount. So just be careful out there to other counselors on the boards that you sit on.
Well, but any other reports?
I attended Northern College Orientation and Student Welcoming Presentation this morning. I'm pleased to say I believe enrollment is up at Northern College approximately sixteen percent, which for Kirkland Lake campus, which is a positive. Timmons is up a similar amount. It was well attended by new students, and it was nice to see we're getting a fair share of foreign students coming to the college. So it was an enjoyable morning and informative.
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council adjourns its regular meeting of September third, 2019, to an in-camera meeting pursuant to section two thirty-nine two of the municipal act to discuss two potential property sales and one potential lease agreement.
All in favor? Unanimous? Adjourned?